LPA thing? Okay, so, let's bring this meeting to order. We're gonna start with the LPA, very short thing, and then we'll go into the meeting. So, if we could stand and do the pledge.
Can we do the roll call first?
Roll call first, okay.
I think so.
Roll call first.
Board member Schroeder?
Here.
Board member Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Board member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Chair Breitker?
Here.
Chair McKay?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You wanna read it in? Jeff?
I'll read it in. A resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending adoption of the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2017 through 2021 and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Public comment closed. Back to us. Anybody got any comments?
I was just saying, appreciate all the work that was done on it.
Awesome. Ditto. Please call the roll.
Board member Schroeder?
Yes.
Board member Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Board member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Breitker?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the LPA.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay. During the LPA, now we're gonna stand and do the pledge all over for the council meeting.
Do we have to roll call?
Then we'll recall the roll out.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Russell, if you could please call the roll.
Council member Schroeder?
Uh, here.
Council member Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Council member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Breitker?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Mayor, the first part of the agenda is public comment. We've received no public comment cards. We have one public comment card. Is there any others?
Yeah, coming up.
Okay, we'll have two public comment speakers tonight, three public comment speakers tonight. First one is Barry Nunzick. Barry? Three minutes to speak.
Three minutes?
It's already started.
It's already started. Such a deal. Such a deal. Such a deal. Good evening, Barry Nunzick, 163 Sterling Road. I'm here tonight to talk about some of the comments that were made at the last council meeting. Mr. Jablonsky, you said that you overheard a conversation with the volunteer fire chief and that you heard yelling and screaming. I do admit Lee Bennett was getting a little bit loud, but I wouldn't describe it as yelling and screaming. I mean, he was upset because I simply asked him to show me his medical supplies, his IV supplies and his drugs, so that he can prove that he can do ALS rescue, but of course, he can't. And this upset him because the fraud that he is perpetrating when he goes around and tells people that he can do ALS rescue was being exposed. I then went on to simply ask him how many emergency rescue calls or any kind of rescue, emergency call, have they run in the last four years that Davy was not responding to? And the answer is zero. So this council has spent $2 million on the paid Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department that has run zero calls. It's also interesting to note that I asked for a public information to see the documentation that says that Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department is ALS certified, because you have to be certified by the state to do that, and you need to be certified by the state to claim that. To do otherwise is fraud, in my opinion. There is no documentation that Lee Bennett can prove that his people are certified ALS. Okay? Other things that were said at the council meeting? Mr. Burns said that he was talking to other fire departments, particularly Plantation, with negotiations. Plantation's name came up. I think it's a wonderful idea if you guys would have Mr. Burns talk to Plantation, because if he does, maybe you can get some information on how to actually set up a volunteer fire department, because Lee Bennett doesn't know how to do it. One of the first things with a volunteer fire department is the personnel is supposed to live in town or very close to the station that they need to be responding to. If they don't, they're useless. Ask any volunteer fire chief and he'll tell you, anyone but Lee Bennett. And Chief Sterns would be a great guy to do it, because he knows all the rules and he does run a volunteer department. So, some of the questions you could ask is should the volunteers live in town with their serving? And he'd probably say yes, or within five to 10 minutes. Should you pay the volunteers to sit around all day? And he'd say, no, that's an unnecessary expense. Then you could ask Plantation what they pay their volunteers, and he'd tell you $7 a call, no matter how long the call lasts. Then you could ask him if the volunteer fire trucks you go out on every call in their district just because they want to, and he'd say, probably, no, it's a waste of equipment and service time. Then you could ask him if a volunteer chief should lie about being able to do ALS rescue service, and he'd probably say, no.
Sorry, your time's up.
And I knew you'd cut me short because of what I was saying, but guess what? I'll be back in two weeks.
Okay.
Second speaker is Chris Walton, and the final speaker is Newell Hunsworth. Sorry, Newell.
Good evening. Chris Walton, Southwest 188th Avenue, 5100. I'm here tonight as a rebuttal to the previous speaker. I was there that evening, along with council member Jablonsky, and the fire department was going through a training. And in an effort for transparency, I volunteer my time as a training officer to the volunteer fire department. I am a resident in town. I volunteer on the fire advisory board, and I previously was a career fire chief to the rank of battalion chief. So I've spent a lot of time in the fire service. I can say, over my entire career, I've never had a resident show up and obstruct a training exercise of a fire department and belittle the chief of that department in front of all of those members. I think it was despicable. I believe that everybody has a right to a perception of how fire service or emergency services should be delivered, but I think there's a forum for that. And I do appreciate council member Jablonsky speaking up and recognizing that the venue in which the discussion occurred was not appropriate. And hopefully, the hostility, the calling the chief of a fire department a liar, could stop. I don't think that Chief Bennett has ever been proven to be a liar. I find him to be a very upstanding leader. And, you know, hopefully, as we explore with Plantation or any of the other agencies, we also look at a special fire district on the west side of town and the many other options to deliver fire services to our residents. I do believe, right now, the system is broken, but to claim that the volunteers are paid firefighter is completely illogical. They're paid minuscule amount of money to be at that station and respond in a timely and effective manner. If you were to take a volunteer response model, you open the door to every volunteer responding to the call. And if you have three calls in a day and 20 volunteers at $7 a call, it's gonna add up to far more money than the two members that are there each day shift. So I think the facts are being skewed to deliver a message, and I just wanted to be here to support what we've done already and where we can go with it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Newell Hunsworth, 199th Avenue. I didn't get much sleep last night. The truck stop out on US 27, which is in the city of Weston, as the city of Weston has granted a 2:00 AM permit to the bar out there. And on Wednesday nights, they have a band out there and have quite a few people that go to it now, because it's becoming well-known. And last night, they had the music volume up extremely loud, to where a couple of people in the neighborhood were out going, where the heck is that? Whose house is that coming from? And it was from the truck stop. And you could hear every note perfectly. You could understand the gentleman on the microphone perfectly when they were singing. The announcer was even louder. And this went on till after 2:00. It was about 2:30 when they finally said, well, that's it, folks, we're wrapping it up now. So, I would, a year ago, or a year and a half ago, I spoke to the city manager of Weston and was told, well, no one in Weston's complained, so we don't have a problem. Well, it's getting louder and louder and louder. And I really feel sorry for the people that live over on 210 and even closer to the truck stop than I do, but you can't open the windows at night. You have to keep the air on. And last night was a very nice evening to let the breeze come through the house. But, I don't know what our municipality can do, because it's in another municipality, but I'd like for someone to see what can be done. And if maybe, speak to someone over there in Weston and see if they can either reduce it to midnight or put a volume control on the place, or change the way the speakers are, because the speakers are facing southeast, because they wanna keep the truck drivers so they can sleep. So the speakers are faced away from the trucks and towards the residence of Southwest Ranches. And it is very loud. It was very loud last night, extremely loud. It sounded like loud music coming from the house across the street. And even when we, the kids on the other side of the canal that's on 199, over there on 201, have a party, it's not even that loud. So, and then at midnight, they shut it down over there. You know, they have a good time till midnight and then shut it down. But this goes on till 2:00 in the morning. Like for the town to be, try and do something, if possible, which I doubt, but, thank you.
No more public speakers, Mayor.
Okay. We are...
Board reports.
Next to board reports. Any board reports? No board reports? Astor?
Just trying to remind everybody that on the 25th, we'll be having the chili cook-off. I know council member Jablonsky is going to give his little speech about it, and I thank him for always performing our efforts. So anyway, we're looking forward to the competition and the attendance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Astor. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Um, council members?
Council member comments, your credit.
Yeah, council members. You wanna go first? Okay. Go ahead, Gary's first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Got a few things here to go over. First off, I wanna let everybody in the town on a big secret. I don't hear so well. So, just wanna get that on the record. But I do hear loud noises. Okay. Just wanna mention, the 18th on February, we have a garage sale in Equestrian Park from 8:00, 8:00 in the morning to 1:00 PM. And as Astor just pointed out, that the Parks Board has, not Parks Board, but the, help me out. Thank you. Foundation has a chili cook-off on the 25th in the afternoon, and then we have the Education Advisory Board with our Ranchers of Distinction Dinner at Tropical Acres that night. Both are fun events, and both for worthwhile causes, and I urge everybody to come out to that. Next meeting, we have Florida Wildlife Commission. They're gonna give us a presentation on the Nile monitor problem that we have out here, and it should be fairly interesting in their eradication program. We've got DMV at Town Hall on the 23rd, I believe, Andy, if that's correct, on that one. And then we have Water Matters on the 11th of March, and I wanna take a moment to talk about Water Matters, because it does. But more special than that, we have December Lore Tano Haynes, who, did I say that right? Yeah, okay. And Chris, from our Parks Board and Parks Foundation, they do a bang-up job every year. If there was a Best of Show Award, they would win it every year. And I don't know if there is one or there isn't, but it's quite fantastic. It looks like a nursery transplanted in the middle of a park, at Treetops Park. It's very worthwhile going. They have a big tree giveaway that's good for a resident. You just have to go through to each booth and get your little ticket stamped usually, and then you go to that, and you get, you pick some pretty good trees. There are mangoes, there's pigeon plums, there's, I've got tamarids growing from when I've gone, and lime trees, and all that. And it's really a lot of fun, and you learn a lot of stuff, and there's a lot of, I wanna say, Chotsky-type stuff for outdoors, bird feeders, rain gauges, you know, things of that nature. But it's a great day, especially if you have kids. They have a blast. It's a lot of fun. There's food trucks there. It's pretty good. And it's all with the admission to the park, which I think is like a dollar a person or something, to that effect.
And you can take your dogs.
Huh?
And you can take your dogs.
Or horse.
Or horse.
You can take your horse. They have a riding trail there. So, but anyway, I urge everybody to go to that. Next item, I had an inspirational thought last Sunday, as I'm caught in the exiting church traffic on Griffin Road, and that after the fourth light change on Griffin and Dykes that I stood in, I suggested to Andy at my meeting with him that if he could petition Broward County to, for a certain time segment, maybe a two-hour segment window, to lengthen the green light another 30 seconds through by the Tom Thumb area there, I think that would really, really help. He's agreed, obviously, he's agreed to do that, but I, when I was sitting there going, if I only had another 20 feet, you know, I could've made it through this series of lights. So, it's a lot of cars, and I really think if they just popped it in there for that window a little longer, east-west traffic, I think it would really help.
Let me join you in quick second on that.
Sure.
Keith, would a resolution or anything like that be more helpful for Andy to go to the county to ask for that, or no? That wouldn't...
You don't really need that.
Okay. Just an ensure.
All right. So, Andy, you know, you can do what you want. You can help us out with that. Okay. Last thing I wanna talk about, I kinda, last meeting, I kinda made this a little bit of a joke, but I just wanted to, in a joking manner, but I really wanted to get serious with it, and I wanna do it right now. And that deals with the five acres that we have of the town property over on Dykes and Griffin and the Green Meadow Sanctuary. I'm a definite no vote for turning that into commercial. There's, I just wanna make sure everybody's very, very clear on that. That was never intended to be bought for commercial. The Comprehensive Planning Board, a couple of years ago, advised unanimously, I believe, that there was no, to be no commercial development on Griffin Road. The only, the only place that we have commercial that we've actually voted for was, is in, on the 27 corridor and the town property and the hole in the donut, you know, which we call something else euphemistically. But, the, and I thought long and hard about this since it was brought up at last meeting, and the tax revenue that that would generate if it were to go commercial, I don't think offsets the loss of the open space. And here, and here's why I'm saying that. You look at the property on the other, on the east side of the street of Dykes is Tom Thumb. It's like roughly an acre to two acres, something to that. So whatever would take place if we ever went that route would be double that. And they only contribute, I say only, you know, it's substantial, but it's not, it's not worth, to me, the open space, about $12,000 a year. So if you doubled that, per se, that would be like $25,000 a year. That would be our offset or our incentive to flip that into commercial. And honestly, I don't think it's worth it. It's gonna be pristine property 10, 15, 20 years from now. I think it's going to be even more valuable, and there's no debate about widening Dykes Road or anything like that, because the only thing that would make commercially sense over there would be some sort of a strip center with multiple tenants. And I don't think it has the parking. I don't think it has the impact. I don't, you know, I don't ever wanna rezone something to commercial where residents are affected. And that's why we have the 27 corridor, and we have a lot of unnatural barriers there, like a cemetery, you know, that kind of thing, or the hole in the donut, where it's surrounded by landfills and the future Broward Men's Prison, you know, that area. So that's, you know, those are the only properties I would consider while I'm on the council, you know, for that. Anything else in the town, it affects residents, it affects who we are, our open space, our rural lifestyle. It's our, it's our whole statement of our, of our being, in my opinion. And I'm only one vote up here, folks, but I wanna make sure everybody understands that. And I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us take the five acres that's there, since Doug did a fantastic job and got us this building, and so the Town Hall issue has been removed about where to get a Town, where to put a Town Hall at. And, you know, and this was the real estate deal of the century, as far as I was concerned, that the mayor pulled off years ago. Like we did in Rolling Oaks, where we had 10 acres, we incorporated that into the park. And I'd like to take that to the Parks Board or to the Comprehensive Planning Board or whoever's involved in advisory committees and get an opinion from them or a vote on doing that for future use. I'm speaking for myself right now. I'd like to see that. I think that is where we need to head as a town in the future.
Let me join in with you a little bit on your, on your overview and thought of that.
Yeah.
I don't think the town's in disagreement as far as what we would like to do or see there. Would we love to keep it open space? We clearly do. That costs money to do. Question is, what are we gonna do with it? Whether you implement it in that way? I had just recently asked Emily to put together a projected cost related to what the requirements would be to finish building out the park part of that property that's not the town property, and that number came in at just over $4 million. Okay? So, we don't have the money to do that build-out. I don't know when and if we will ever have the money to do that build-out. But I would tell you, in the conversations that Andy and I have had with a couple of people related to that site, that they have agreed to participate in completing or helping quite a bit in meeting our obligations related to that part. So, I want, I'd like y'all to have the whole big picture of things moving forward. So, the town doesn't have the money to do the build-out or finish the park there, and if we're gonna hang on to the town property, obviously, that's gonna cost us more money and add maybe to whatever build-out. So, moving forward, I'd like the council's additional input of what they think and where we're gonna go, or what we can do, or where the money's gonna come from. So, and as you and I spoke at the Country Estates meeting the other night, the cost of the fires going up and all those other things. So, I'm, I guess I'm looking at things more on a big picture, big scale, because we kept our millage pretty straight and level for four or five years. And if we don't get some more revenue into this town, whether it's, however we're gonna do it, and offset some additional costs, whether it's park developments or whatever it's gonna be, to keep the millage rate down, get our taxes up, so we can keep the millage low and afford the fire and whatnot. So, I would like you guys thinking on the entire big picture related to what somebody else can assist or help us with, not just selling something and converting it something. Part of the position, the good thing for us is, is that, yeah, do we wanna keep our rural lifestyle? We wanna keep it as much as we can. Everybody out here lives on more than an acre. You practically have a park in your own yard. We have lots of acreage of open space. We have some nice parks. They're not completed. They're gonna require a lot of additional money to get completed. And with things like that, I'd like you guys to look at the big picture. So, what I'm saying to you is, the people that we've spoken to, I've expressed the fact that we have other needs and uses of the town and that it's adjacent to a park, and they voluntarily said, maybe we can help complete that for you. So, I want you guys to realize, it's not just a sell of a property and dictating what it can be or whatever, but it's also assisting us with money we don't have on other projects that we are required to meet obligations to. So I just wanted everybody to think as the big picture, not just as a one parcel. So, in moving forward, if you don't want anything happening there, I wanna know what your ideas or thoughts are moving forward related to that, and where the money's gonna come from to do with it what you want. So, I just wanted to join in on it.
No, that's fine. That's fine. The discussion, you know, more discussion is better than no discussion and isolating, you know?
Absolutely. Listen, this is the only time we get to talk about things openly.
Right, exactly. Exactly. And it's something, something like this, it can, you know, the wheels can come off very quickly if we're not careful. You know, if we're not careful about that. I'm thinking Dykes Road, I'm thinking the residents down the street. I'm also thinking, you know, once you've sold, you sold it and converted it, that's it. You've lost control of it. It's going, I don't care how you structure the lease or whatever.
Well, that's true, but you have a site plan application, site plan appro, you have all kinds of stuff where you have say and input.
Right. But once the sale is in, that's, it's pretty much, it's down, it's down the tracks. And the beautiful part about it is, you can always sell it if you have to, at some later date. You don't have, if you don't have to sell it now, and it's only gonna increase in value, you know, down the line, so it, you know, I'm more in the do-nothing mode, keep it mode, you know? As everybody knows, and I don't care that the grass gets higher, I've made that statement a million times. But, you know, I think we owe it to our residents that we, you know, founded this town on no develop, no commercial, limited, if any, you know? And, you know, everybody needs, everybody recognizes that. I'd love to hear the opinion of advisory boards, I really would, on this matter, as a topic for all the boards affected, whether it's rural arts, parks, comprehensive planning, you know, what have you. I'd love to hear their input, because that's really, that's one of our core group of citizens, you know? And they're one of the most well-informed that we have. And I, I'm throwing it out there to you guys, to, you know, can we, can we...
I guess we're looking for you guys' additional input on his initial conversation, so we're still on...
I won't interrupt, but I'll be happy.
No, no, please, jump in. You know, I just wanted to make it clear where I stood.
Right. First of all, I agree with you 100% that it makes all the sense in the world to forward this to the boards and get their feedback and get their thoughts on it. Personally, myself, I don't see any circumstance where I would want to sell that property. I just, I can't see it. Matter of fact, I would prefer to get it involved in something that is open space park-wise now to avoid, Gary, what you were mentioning, that someday there may be some sort of a crisis and we might wanna sell it. I would rather get it tied in with something and make it happen sooner rather than later.
That's why I wanted it, like we did with the Rolling Oaks Park, with the 10 acres. We took it out of any future council's hands.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I would prefer to do. But, Mayor, you bring up a good point. You can't, you can't ignore reality, and the reality is, is that this is going to be expensive to develop, or to, yeah, to develop to meet the criteria that we need to for there. But I think that what we've shown over time is that if we work with the county, we work with the state, we work with the other entities that frankly want to see that remain open space and want it to be open space for Broward County, opportunities will come along. Grants will come along. We've, we've done more in 17 years in our parks than I think anyone ever imagined when we first took on the purchase of most of these properties. And I wanna continue along with that route. I think we can do it. This, this area in particular, I apologize, I'm looking the other way. I don't mean to put my back to y'all. But this park in particular, to me, is the gateway of the town. I wouldn't wanna see this done to any park, but this park in particular is, you know, if you come off I-75 and you head west, this is the first thing you see. And for that to be some sort of a commercial strip center, gas station, whatever, I, that would, that would break my heart.
Let me, let me remind you guys of a rendering that was done of a thought and a vision for that location. I know it was gonna be a Town Hall and a fire station and other, a couple of other things, but I don't know if you guys remember the rendering or whatever, but remember, we get to dictate what it is or what it is and what the site plan is. So, I would tell you, if we stuck with something like that as a look, that we initially thought, I think that would go well with our town, in my opinion, as far as the look and the theme and what we're doing. theme, and what we were doing, aside from bringing a town hall. So, maybe I'll have Andy dig that rendition back out, or that drawing, so we can look at it again next meeting or whatever. But I think you ought to look at it and get a, you know, have a thought, and end the discussion on what it's going to cost to do what you guys want to do. I mean, there's an additional cost to completing what you guys want to do and keeping it.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. What, what, if I jump in here?
Sure, sure. It's your time.
Do.
Yeah, it is your time.
Sure. Sure. What, what are, exactly are our obligations, other than open space? You know, I, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head right now.
Could I ask Emily to come up for just a minute? Maybe give us a little idea of what that, Andy, what's your thoughts?
Well, we, we can do that, Mayor. However, let me say, staff certainly isn't prepared to do a presentation on this tonight. And I wouldn't want to do something halfway, and not give you all the correct information. I did hear from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Jablonski, the thought of potentially polling, or having the advisory boards give you some feedback. If the council wants us to go ahead with that, we can go ahead, we can, we can poll the advisory boards, get that feedback, and then schedule that information for a presentation and a council discussion, once we have that information.
Great idea.
If that makes sense.
I mean, I'm good with that, but just because she gave me a, I guess what I was going is, the auspices of the list of things she gave me the other day, related to what the cost was, just for that one park, is kind of what I was looking to tell them.
There was a list that was compiled, that included, basically, the Cadillac version of everything that, that we had potentially committed, or had been discussed for that park. And as I said, we're, we're really not prepared to do a discussion or a presentation on that this evening. But, to do those, to max those things out, obviously, there's all kinds of, I'll say, value engineering, there's the opportunity for the council to go back and revisit some of those things, what, what you want to do, what you don't want to do, what, what was prepared for you, which did come in at over $4 million, then came in at about 4.4, if I remember correctly, was absolutely everything done to the highest level, the absolute maximum potential exposure. So, you know, I, I'd want to go back and revisit that, and, and prepare that properly for council consideration, if, if, certainly that means with councils.
And that was just for the park side, not the five acres related to the town?
Right. I, I would agree with that, except that I would say this, that when we send this to the boards, for their consideration, they need to see those numbers and everything as well. In other words, I wouldn't go to the boards first, and then bring their feedback and the numbers back to us. We need to give the numbers to the boards, so they see the full picture, and then get their feedback, and bring everything back to us. That's what I would say.
We can prepare that for them, and have, have the boards discuss that individually at their meetings, compile that information, based on the, the full picture. You know, we want to give them as complete a picture as we can.
You want, you want the Cadillac, you want the Chevy, and you want the Pinto, you know? No Pinto. Just the Chevy and the Cadillac.
Pinto was the death.
We, we can certainly do that, and, and I think this council would be better prepared to have that discussion, with that feedback, and, and with that information, fully vetted by, by, I'll say by staff, for your, for your consideration, along with the, the advisory board feedback.
Yeah, I would, I would think that would be, you know, go through all the steps, let's see what, let's see what we're looking at, you know, top to bottom, you know, in terms of obligations. I mean, if we don't have to do anything for 20 years, great, you know? Let's not do anything for 20 years. You know, I, you know, what's the rush? You know, where's the fire, so to speak?
So, let me jump in, just so, the information, along with that information, give us what the dates or deadlines, or how much time we have. Because there are deadlines, and there are extensions we already had, and there's huge reductions that Emily have already been able to, and put in place and stuff. So, along with the deadlines and time, and stuff like that. I know we've gotten extensions, I know we've gone beyond them, but we need to know what those are also.
Okay. And on a, another note, you know, in the wildlife category, I just got a note that off of a security camera on 199th in a residential home, a Florida panther came in and unfortunately killed a dog and a bunch of chickens.
Wow.
So, I urge everybody to be.
On their toes.
Just be aware, be aware of this. I just got this note, over here, from a resident.
Do you have the image?
No, it, it was captured on a, on a security camera from a, a home.
It can be validated, it could have been.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I just, I just wanted, I'd rather say it, and it'd be wrong, you know? It'd be an overgrown cat, you know, a 5, 60-pound cat, as opposed to, you know, not saying anything, so.
Floor's still yours. And anybody else that wants to jump in on this conversation?
I'm done.
Okay. Do you want to go next, or Steve?
I'll be happy to go.
I'm gonna let Steve go next.
Okay.
All right. Debating whether to respond, Barry, to your comments, or not.
Everything I said is true.
You know, I also was there that night, I got a little, I got there a little later. I was getting out of my truck when I heard the voices that were loud. Your voice was clearly among those that I heard that was loud, so, you know, to, to say that you were, you know, just calmly asking the questions, I think is an inaccurate way to describe what happened that evening. The certifications, the majority of the volunteer staff is ALS certified, so that is not a lie, that is in fact true. And I'll just say that I have found, I've known Chief Bennett for many years, both before and after he was a chief here, and I would put him up against anybody, as far as integrity, and truthfulness, and, and being a quality individual. And I'll leave it there. The, the music at the truck stop, Andy, let's, let's see what we can, maybe administrator to administrator, okay, have a conversation there. If, if you, in that conversation, if you, you can bring up that, you know, the member of the council would be happy to go to one of their council members, and personally make a petition for it, because I would be happy to do that, and if that would be helpful. Just a quick comment about Water Matters, it's one of my favorite events in the whole wide world, December. Thank you, as always, for the amazing job that you do, year in, year out, on that, and all your staff that helps. I know you're, you have, you have some great volunteers that help you as well, so thank you to everybody. And just encourage everybody to go out there on March 11th. I've got some amazing tall cypress trees, four of them, in my backyard, that were about the size, about the thickness of, of my small finger, when I got them, about 12, 13 years ago. And now they are beautiful majestic trees, so it's amazing what they, what they can grow into, and, and just enjoy watching and, and growing. The last thing that I wanted to touch on, the, the traffic signals for the church, certainly Dyke Road is one of the issues, but if we're going to have that conversation, please include Griffin and Bonaventure in that conversation as well, because it's, the same thing happens there. I know, Gary, you're not, but, that's a little, little east of you, but that's, there's the same, same situation at that light, as well. So, great, thank you, Mayor.
Next, Dee? Freddie?
Freddie?
Go ahead, Dee.
I think I'm going to hold my comments. I'm, I would like to have spoke on the five acres, but until we get all the information that Andy's going to check out, I, I think I'll just hold my comments right now, as far as that goes. Our advisory boards, I'm not really familiar with the policy. I did have a couple calls from residents requesting to get on these boards. I don't know how it works. I told these people I would get back with them, as far as if they can be placed on. They said, well, the boards are filled to the max. I don't think a resident that really wants to get on the board should be told, no, you can't, because we've, we're maxed out, you know? That's something that should be a little more flexible. We never seem to have full boards all the time anyway, someone is always absent. I don't know if they can go on as at-large, or whatever, but, you know, maybe I could get this information and pass it on to them. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, Dee, on the boards, what we've tried to do in the past, is to keep them odd, for voting purposes. I mean, they're still an advisory board, so, I would, yeah, odd numbered, just makes it easy.
Oh, just not odd people? Just odd numbers?
Odd numbered people.
All right.
So, go, go ahead, Steve.
Can I make a comment along that, that same line?
Sure.
Thank you. Keith, we, you know, we've talked about different options, as far as board members. Is it possible, almost like a jury, to have an alternate board member?
100%, 100%.
What's that?
100%.
Yeah, because that might help us with our, our quorum.
That does not change your quorum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you could absolutely have, in fact, Councilmember Fisk Kelly has been an alternate on MPO for as long as I can remember.
Right.
So, you know, you vote sometimes, you don't vote sometimes.
Right.
Depends on the meeting.
While, since we're on this subject, and, and there, and since you brought it up, I wanted to mention the fact that back in December, Bob Hartman had mentioned making Vince a honorary member of the Drainage Committee. And I'd like to know if we could go ahead and do that. And secondly, if someone else that would like to get on that board, which is Steve Wiener, who, you know, who was on the comp plan board previously.
Weiner.
He, Wiener.
Steve Weiner, isn't it?
Yeah.
Weiner?
So anyhow, he, he was upset that he got bumped off the comp plan board, or whatever, and asked if there's some other boards he could participate with. And I said, I think there's an opening, but I said, the problem is, we try to keep it odd numbers, and so if we're going to make Vince an honorary member, and if we could put Steve Wiener in that slot, that would be great. I don't know if Freddie's okay with that, it was his pick, so if you're okay with that, I'd like us to make that.
Is Vince okay with it?
Change, yeah. Well, he'd be an honorary member, anyway.
But he wouldn't be able to vote anymore?
Uh, you know, I don't know if he, Steve, I mean, Keith, being an honorary member, can he vote anymore, Vince, or no?
If he's an alternate member.
Alternate honorary, well, he'd be an honorary member, but then, then he'd also become the alternate?
I, I wouldn't, it, don't need to call him an honorary member, just call him an alternate member, and then he can vote when, whenever you need an additional person. What's good about having an alternate member is, because then if there's not a quorum, and they show up, then they can make a quorum and actually hold the meeting, so it helps out in a lot of different scenarios, to have an alternate member who can vote when one of the primaries is not there.
So, so as an alternate, would they have input with the board while it's being conducted, or are they're just peanut gallery?
No, they're, they're allowed to speak, they just are not allowed to vote.
Okay.
So, I guess my, my question is, is, and Vince is right here, but if he was an alternate honorary member, then if the full board was there, he would not be able to vote. If it was less than the full board, then he could vote. And I don't know if Vince would, if that's what he's looking for, or is not. So, and maybe we shouldn't put him on the spot, maybe we should have another conversation with him, one-on-one, and find out if, if he's agreeable to that, and, and figure that out another day.
Well, I'm, well, good with that, if you want to do that, but it's still, Steve Wiener's been waiting for about a month to find out where he could get on, so he'd like to get on, so if this board's minimal, we'd like to add him to that board. Is that okay with you, Freddie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which board?
The Drainage Board.
As an alternate? Is this as an alternate?
Well, not as an alternate, because we're going to wait and hear back from Vince, what he wanted to do.
Just because we don't have anything in front of us, how many members are currently on that board?
Five.
So, this would be a six? So, do you want a even number?
No, we want an odd number, but.
Drainage has more than.
Is it seven?
No, I thought it was like nine.
No.
Bob Hartman.
Bob.
How many people are on the Drainage Board Committee now? How many members?
I think we're seven.
Okay. So, this would make it an even number. So, would you rather be as an alternate, and have a first and second alternate, or do you want it to be an even number?
I, my, my opinion, I don't think we can make Vince an alternate until after we've spoken to him, one-on-one. And so, if we're going to add somebody else on there, it has to be an alternate, and then maybe swap them if it's that, but if they don't, then, then he would have to stay in an alternate.
Another reason why an alternate's good is because it doesn't increase your quorum requirement.
Right.
Because if you're adding him, it means you're increasing quorum.
From, yeah, from four to five.
Yes.
I guess we'll have to hold off, because I'll have to ask him if he's interested in being an alternate.
It's two weeks, it's not.
I know, but I'm just saying, he's been at it for a while, and the, the comp plan board didn't want to increase. I asked, he wanted to get back on, but they, they thought they were happy with five, so that's what they're happy with, I didn't want to change it. Dee? You're still up?
No. I asked what I needed to ask, and, like I said, I'm just waiting on that, five acres. That was my big thing, to get all the information on it, before, you know, I make any comments.
All right. Freddie?
I'm good.
You're good. Nothing from the MPO today? Okay. All right. I already addressed mostly what I wanted to with, with Vince and whatnot. So, I guess I'm good. Legal comments?
We had our, the motion for summary judgment hearing. I thank the Mayor and Councilmember Schroeder for participating and seeing, basically, when as we expected it would, it won't be answered for a long time. I suspect, we all know what the answer is, and that is, we believe the interference claim is going to be sustainable, and will end up, and before jury, hopefully sometime this year, that is the goal, to dispose of this, and be done once and for all. Other than that, no further legal comments.
Okay. Andy, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have anything, but I'd like to turn it over to Russell for a moment, if I, if I may. Russell attended a, a South Florida Water Management District meeting yesterday with December, where they were talking about the recreation area out west, and the bridges over the C-11. And so I, first of all, I want to thank he and December for attending and representing the town. Katie Edwards from Keith's office did some, some great work on our behalf as well, and I wanted to thank her. But I wanted to let Russell just talk about the meeting that he attended, and the discussion that took place at the Water Management District, if I may.
Thank you, Andy. Yes, as Andy indicated, December and I did attend the meeting, and we basically thanked all of the community partners, the Town of Davie, Broward County, the South Florida Water Management District, and specifically Katie Edwards, and also Jerry Krenz from the South Florida Water Management District, for their efforts on supporting our request. As you recall, we approved a resolution supporting the two bridge crossings over the C-11, as part of that impoundment project. So, there, the committee was very receptive. This was basically a, a committee that reports back to the general board. They're very supportive of the project. We got a little bit of insight, December and I, into some of the other projects that they're working on, so it was pretty interesting to see that. And we communicated, I think, effectively, the town's, you know, support of this project. We indicated how this is going to be the most cost-effective way to kind of ensure the safety of our residents, and the people using the trails. So, I think they were pretty happy to see us there, supporting that project. The board meeting was today. Unfortunately, I don't have any results regarding the full board, you know, support or action on this, on this item at this time. I do have a request into Jerry Krenz to report back to me, and let me know how it went, so as soon as I hear that back, I'll, I'll make sure that we communicate that back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Freddie?
Yeah, just briefly, on this thing about the Florida Everglades. You know, I don't, I know most of people here are well aware of my experience with the Everglades, but you know, it's one of the wonders of the world. Florida Everglades is not just something else, it's, it's the only thing there is. And it's something, and where, it's prior hand, is part of the Everglades. And we have the responsibility to protect it. That's what I say, you know, so that's one of the things, when we, we've got to keep active with this thing, and make sure that we don't let, get it out of hand, because there's problems, big problems, right now, with, right now, with all this thing going on with the water, coming out of Lake Okochobee, and what it can do. But, you know, if you ever get a chance, you need to look at Margaret Stone Douglas' book, The Everglades, what it was before, where the water came out of the lake, and of the, the Everglades, what it was before, where the water came out of the lake, and it flowed through the grass all the way to the coast. And they've channelized it now, they've done all the things that they've done to try to destroy it. And it's our responsibility to, apart, to send Broward County to protect it, because it, it needs to be protected. Because people, to this day, nobody knows where our drinking water comes from. We know where the Florida Acifer, where the Biscayne Acifer is, and all that stuff is. But there's so many things that goes on, and one of them, thank God, I don't know how it got happened, but they stopped that bar control. You know, no, people don't realize, if that thing had or went through, we could have cut off our freshwater supply. Because we don't know where it starts. It may be starting up at the Georgia Line, or wherever it starts, we don't know. And that's why we've got to be very protective, when we start doing things in the Everglades, to make sure that we know what's going on, because we could cut our own throats. You know, like I say, is, until we know exactly where that water comes from, where our water supply, we know where, we know pretty well about the Biscayne Acifer, we know about the Florida Acifer, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions there that needs to be watched. And we're part of the people that, that is watching it. That's why I say we need to keep active on it.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? We're good? All right. Russell?
Would you like me to read the ordinance, ma'am?
Yep, ordinance number eight, first reading.
Amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled Definition of Terms, to define newly regulated terms, amending Article 45, entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 40, 045-050, uses permitted to prohibit cannabis-related uses, and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 50, entitled Commercial Districts, Section 050-040, permitted uses, and Section 050-080, limitations of uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses. Prohibit or restrict certain additional uses, and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 55, entitled M Manufacturing and Industrial District, Section 55-040, permitted and prohibited uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses, and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 60, entitled CF Community Facility District, Section 060-030, permitted uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses, and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 65, entitled Recreation and Open Space District, Section 065-030, permitted uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses, and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this, this comes before you and the council with recommendation of approval from your local planning agency. If you recall, the state is currently in rulemaking as it relates to establishments, and we'll take away our home rule at some point, and dictate regulations relating to these establishments. Russell went to the rulemaking workshop earlier this week. There were so many people there, in such a limited timeframe, that I think they only got to, how many speakers?
There was probably about sixty to sixty-five speakers.
Sixty who spoke, and probably at least another hundred who didn't get up to speak because they ran out of time. So this is a long process in the Florida Legislature, so we're, we're suggesting that you enact this, and then wait and see what comes down from the Florida Legislature before revising the code alternatively.
Motion.
A motion to approve. Second.
Any public comment?
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. If you've been following the news, they've been doing public hearings, and they did them in Dayton Broward this week, on this particular topic. And if NPR is to be believed, the local, actually, it's the Miami Herald, a lot of people showed up at those meetings asking, why is it only seven companies who are getting this? Is it, did the seven companies, did they invest in something, or give big campaign contributions? So it's going to be interesting to see how this evolves, because seven companies, that's the wisdom of the legislature. If they're really trying to create jobs in Tallahassee, open it up. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seen no public comment, public comment closed. Back to us. Motion and a second, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, number nine.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2017 through 2021 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment? Seen no public comment, public comment closed. Any other questions or concerns here? All right, call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Number 10.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a cost-sharing project fund agreement with South Florida Water Management District for up to $100,000, or 50% of the eligible stormwater expenditures for the project, whichever is less, to complete the Dykes Road Drainage and Water Quality Project, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment?
New Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. At this time, I'm almost 100% positive this is going to pass the council tonight. You do have one major consideration to take care of. You've got a $100,000 grant, and then you've got a $50,000 grant, plus the engineering, leaving $229,000 for the town, well, approximately 229, for the town finance. Now, there's $100,000 drainage money every year already allocated. Now, that's two and a third years of the 100% of the drainage money, that's one option. The other option is you take it out of general fund, or you do some other combination of transportation fund, or something, if that's legal, because it is a roadway piece of work, actually. But I know that if you pass it tonight, you are obligated in our next budget, $229,000 already. So I need for this council to determine this evening, how are you going to pay for it? Are you going to take it flat out of general fund? Are you going to do some other combination? What are the options? And I asked our engineer the other day to, you know, what are the options, and how is it going? Well, Marty said we just, you know, do it and figure it out later. No, you don't do it that way. Tonight is the night you have to determine how it's going to be paid, because you are obligating the town, if you pass this tonight, to pay it. So what is the financing that the council determines is going to be used to pay for this $229,000 that you are obligating the town to? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seen no additional public comment, public comment is closed, back to us. Go ahead, Steve.
Actually, I was going to ask that question, but thank you for putting the exclamation point on it.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, thank you, Vince. So Marty, can you talk about that? I know that we had, and Councilmember Jablonsky is, is, oh, he's, well, he's proponent of this in the past, I don't want to speak for him on this issue, because he may have other thoughts. But I just don't want to, I don't want to steal his thunder, because this is something that I've heard him speak on before. Anyway, we did have a, I believe it was 300-plus surplus from the prior year, and in the past, we have picked out certain capital projects that were perhaps worthy. I think this one is very worthy from a drainage standpoint, it's going to really help out in that section of town, plus we have the opportunity for $150-plus thousand in grants to go with it, so makes an incredible amount of sense to do it. But I do think that it, we should be identifying where we anticipate the remainder of the funds coming. So I throw out the surplus, not as that's the solution to it, you know, maybe $100,000 from this year's budget, because that's what we have allocated, and then maybe the remainder from the surplus, or maybe you had some other thoughts on it, but I just throw it out. I'd like to, yeah, if you can, if you can provide some feedback on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, the town financial administrator, and yes, there are a lot of avenues, mechanisms for fulfilling this commitment in the future. It is, and will be, part of the budget process, the forthcoming, that will calendar of events will be starting next month, with the timeframe involved, and along with that, it's a, a process that involves, we're waiting for the audited numbers from last year, the 9/30/16 to be finalized. We have current year activity that still needs to be finalized, and then we need policy direction from you as part of the budget process, as well as your advisory boards. So the important thing we've done tonight is provide you full transparency. It is an informal commitment, but some recommendations of where that can come from, is, as you suggested, Vice Mayor, is the general fund. We, we may have some availability within the transportation fund. There, of course, the fallback is the trim and millage. However, in addition to that, we may have additional pickup in the current year, a surplus, we hope, knock on wood, as we've had in the past five years. So there's availability of surplus of current year activities. So there's so many different areas where the amounts can be pulled from. That will be, I can promise you, as part of our budget process, that will be included to ensure funding down the road. Now, that doesn't stop you from designating tonight, but I, I'd just like to caution you to just hold out and wait, and include it as part of the budget process.
Okay. Vice, Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, if I, if I may add one, one other thing.
Go ahead.
In our request in Tallahassee this year, as we work with our lobbyists and put our wish list together, this project is on that list as well, okay?
Great, yeah. I, I don't.
Thank you, town administrator, thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that we have to decide tonight. I did want to hear options and get an idea of which direction we're going, and so I'm comfortable with that. And we'll have the floor just for a second. I just wanted to welcome you and your entire staff, or not entire, but other members of your staff, welcome back from different, you know, health challenges, so it's good to be back at a full staff again, and, and it's, I'm glad that everything went well with you and Richard and the whole group, so that's, that's fantastic.
Thank you. It's, I appreciate everyone's prayers and thoughts, and everything worked well. Thank you very much.
All right. The only thing I'd like, as we go through the budget process, if you'd clarify in the future, how we're, what the process is for us paying for this particular item?
Yes, I will, Mayor.
Okay, is that, is that clear enough for everybody?
Perfect.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add some comments in on, on this project. It seems like we get a 100-year rain every five years. And I don't know how many people remember what happened at that intersection, but Dykes Rose was shut down for.
Underwater.
It was, it was a day or two, completely underwater, it was like four to six feet of water, I mean, it was like unbelievable. And people were driving off the road, because you couldn't tell where the road stopped, started, and into the swale, and into the ditch, to the point where we had to block it down by Hawks Bluff and up on Griffin Road. And that wasn't the first time. So this is, I would say, a desperately needed project. Obviously, we don't need it when it doesn't rain, but, you know, we live in South Florida, and who knows what the next rain's going to bring, so I definitely, wholeheartedly support this. We, we need to figure out how we're paying for it, that's obvious, we do that with everything. And I, and I have great confidence in our crack staff, that they can, you know, figure it out, take it, take care of it. And as Steve, as you alluded to, I, I always like to mention the word surplus, whenever I can, just to remind everybody that we are careful stewards of their money, and this is no exception to that. We had a budget in excess of, last year, surplus of over $300,000, of which we spent approximately $30,000 to $40,000 on an irrigation project, and a couple other increased town mowing project, if I recall. And we, the rest went into the reserves, and we can reallocate that if we, portions of that if we need to, plus we have this year's $100,000 budget for drainage, plus next year's $100,000, plus the year after that. It's a question of how we manage it. And I think Andy and his staff can figure it out for us, and we just, you know, we just need to hear what, what the components are. And I'd like to give them the time to do that, and not to mention the fact that Tallahassee may help us out with that. So I feel, I have a great deal of confidence in everybody, that's all.
Like to, I'd like to jump in one quick second on that, is that in moving forward on how we pay for stuff and do that, and when we get an opportunity and somebody's giving us a lot of money, or grant money, or whatever the case, and we have to pitch in, and it would be crazy not to do the deal, I just want to make sure that the Drainage Committee still has their $100,000, because if we commit their $100,000 for the next two years, we might as well not have the committee meeting, because they've got no money to spend. So I would like to make sure that they still have their $100,000 each year, aside from what we commit to spend, related to how we get the other money is a different story. So I just hope you all are on board with that thought process.
I am, I am to a point, I mean, there's a budget there, and we've got to fit within the budget. So I, I agree with you from the standpoint that I would not want to be spending two or three years in the future's their budgets, you know, for a project today.
That's what we're getting at.
You know, we need to find another way to fund that, so that they can continue to do projects in future years. So from that standpoint, I agree with you.
All right, great. Dee?
No, no comment.
Anybody else? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, number 11.
Mayor, the, the item 11 on the agenda, just for agenda purposes, is incorrectly noted. It's actually quasi-judicial in nature, because it's a waiver of a plat.
Oh.
Doesn't affect it, it was still advertised in accordance with the town procedure. So just for purpose of the record, I'm announcing that.
So we need to close and reopening it?
No, no, it's fine, it's just quasi-judicial in nature. If anyone needs me to read the rules of quasi-judicial procedure, I'm happy to. It's the same that's been on the agenda for the last 16, 17 years, almost now. And if not, we will read the item into the record, and then we'll swear in anyone who wishes to speak on the item.
Thank you, Keith. A resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP-18-17, to subdivide approximately 4.47 net acres of property into two lots of approximately 2.3 and 2.2 acres for the property generally located on the west side of Southwest 142nd Avenue, also known as Hancock Road, approximately 300 feet south of Sunset Lane, and described as the south half of the north half of Tracks 23 and 24, less the east 70 feet of Track 24 for road right-of-way, according to the Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision of Section 3, Township 51, South Range 40 East, as recorded in Plat Book 2, page 39 of the Miami-Dade County Florida Public Records. Said land now lying and being situated in the Town of Southwest Ranches, Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Anyone of the public, or anyone else who wishes to speak on this item, if you could please stand and raise your right hand for Russell to swear you in.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Had, does any member of the Town Council had any ex parte discussions concerning this matter?
No.
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 Thank you. Mayor, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadums, to enter into the staff report, and to give a quick synopsis.
Staff report is entered into the record, please. The applicant's here, and I thank the applicant for your patience in getting your, your dose of local government tonight. It's, this is a straightforward lot division, there's four and a half, just under four and a half acres, is an existing home with improvements on the north half. In splitting the lot, they are leaving enough room for a conforming new lot to the south that would be the site of a new residence, while maintaining all the setbacks and development requirements on the developed portion of the lot. Access is going to be from, from Hancock, both lots will have access, full access and frontage to Hancock. No issues in terms of utilities, schools, or anything else that we look at, and we don't have any special conditions of approval that we would attach to this, other than full cost recovery to the extent that it is required. other than full cost recovery to the extent that it is required. I will point out two things for the town clerk to please take notice of. I noticed a couple of typos. One is in Section 2 of the reso. We need to correct it to WP-18-17. I had 18-18. And the ordinance should take effect upon recordation. That's Section 6. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Does any members of the Town Council have any questions for Mr. Cadums at this time?
No.
Thank you. At this time, if the applicant's present, if you can come to the microphone, state your name for the record and your address.
The proposed address?
No, your current address.
Current address.
Okay. Sean Kern.
Jill Kern.
And we are 12432 Emerald Creek Court in Plantation 33322.
And just for the record, you've been sworn in?
Yes.
And you understand why you're here?
Yes.
Okay, you now have 30 minutes to make a presentation.
He can do that.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to the record?
No. We're very excited to become, well, we've been living, actually, in Southwest Ranches for over 25 years. 25 years, so my husband is lucky enough to be with me and to live next door to my mother, so he's a good guy.
Does any members of the Town Council have any questions for the applicant/future resident?
No.
No.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have any concluding remarks? All right, at this time, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you for consideration and review.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
With the stipulations?
With the stipulations that were brought up, yes.
Correct. I second it.
All right. Any other comments?
Just to say, we're excited to have you here in the ranches.
Welcome aboard. All right, call the question.
We probably want to vote first.
I did screw up. Did any member of the public have any comment that they wanted to make? Sorry. I apologize for that. Bob left, and he was the only one I saw that was sworn in. Were you sworn in, Noel?
Yes, I was.
Okay, sorry.
I was going to tell you that. Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. Just one question, looking at the aerial, is all of the improvements that are on one lot, is the setbacks acceptable to our code for those improvements that are in there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you had stepped out. Did you want to speak on the item?
Okay.
All right. Then now everything's closed, Mayor, ready for you.
Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiskelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Welcome, yes.
Vice Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Absolutely.